I'm calling the meeting to order of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment of or ensuing discussion. And Phil Pacino will be the Board's Secretary. We've got some guests here tonight. Gail, welcome.
Thank you, John. Good to be here.
And I think John Rogers had also said that he was gonna try to participate as well. But I don't see him on the Zoom yet. We're still missing some people from the CAB meeting, which is just wrapping up now. So let's give them perhaps just a minute to see if they can join us. Phil Pacino, welcome to the meeting.
Yes, I was just in the CAB meeting, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't know if it was my turn or not, but you know, I got nothing better to do tonight, so I went.
Oh, we have a video view though this time, Phil. This is great. This is great.
I'm in the modern age now.
Absolutely. And of course, you're our appointed Board Secretary. Thank you very much. We have, as I mentioned, a guest or two tonight, which I have not, a couple have not showed up yet. And I think we're waiting for Colleen to sign in as well.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Hameen.
Hameen, how are you?
Not bad, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, she's gonna join us in a few seconds. She just was done. We were just done with the CAB meeting.
Great, great.
Citizens Advisory Board for the Layman.
I spoke to Karen Herrick earlier today. She said she might not be able to make the meeting tonight because of another meeting she has to be at, but if she shows up, that'd be great. As liaison from the Board of Selectmen.
John, just FYI, I might go blank on my video for a while.
Okay, sure, Rob. That's no problem. We don't want you to be in an accident, so whatever you have to do, do it, obviously. Yep.
Doesn't look like you're moving very fast there.
That's what happens when you go about 200. Everything just stands still.
Right.
Is that where you get your best Wi-Fi, Robert, in your driveway?
Exactly. Go ahead, get my neighbor's best Wi-Fi.
This is somewhat unusual that people are having either difficulty signing in or that we're a little bit late getting started. It's just a little bit strange.
What are you waiting for now, John?
Well, see, Phil was here. Phil, are you still here?
Yeah, he's still here.
Okay, good.
I think we're good to go.
Oh, good. Okay, is Colleen here?
Yeah.
Here.
Oh, good. I'm sorry. I didn't see you in the picture. Sorry.
And we have George. We have George Hooper, too. You might not have your full screenshot there. What are you using, your phone, John? Little screen or something?
No, I'll go to Gal Review. There we go.
There we go.
Now I've got everybody. Thank you very much. Yeah, I didn't see everybody coming in.
Yeah, we just left our meeting.
Oh, good. George, hello. Good to always. Pleasure to have you here. And I mentioned John Rogers was signing in as well.
Yeah, he's here.
Pleasure to have you here. Let's see here. We've got everyone else. We talked about Gail, and I think everyone's here, so this is great. So why don't we get started? I already read the opening remarks. We talked about Phil. And Phil, do you have any comments on the CAB meeting you just came from?
Yeah, I attended the meeting. Like I said, I don't know if it was my turn to attend, but you know, I had nothing better to do, so I decided I'd attend tonight. Basically, we kind of went over the minutes. There was a General Manager's Report, the audit reports, Chuck gave a report. There's also a presentation on the small cell wireless, which we're gonna get in this meeting also. It was very informative going forward at this point. They also elected a new Chair going forward, Jason Small, and the Vice Chair will be Vivek going forward from now on.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. We don't have any liaisons, as I mentioned before, to the Board of Selectmen from Redding, so we'll pass that. We'll move directly into public comment. And if, let's see, I believe that there are a couple places we could have public comment here from the Grace Group. They had sent a letter to us making certain requests. And what I'd like to do is put a more in-depth sort of answer or answers from them in our September meeting. But in the meantime, we could talk a little bit, perhaps tonight, even during Chuck's presentation, which will deal with some of the climate change-related issues. But I think that the two that are of concern to me, I think to the other Commissioners as well, is that we would like to make a request to the Grace Group to basically, if you feel that the IOUs have, I think you used the words transparent, I've got the letter here somewhere, criteria in terms of, let me just find it as a matter of fact. We adopt a policy of parity with the investor-owned utilities, hitting the same annual targets for renewable and clean energy and reporting progress under the same rules. That was sort of one thing that we would like you to define for us. In other words, tell us what you think those policies are. And you know that we're not an IOU. We are not a multi-billion dollar corporation. And Chuck will delve a little bit into some of those differences and why those are very important to us. And there was another comment in the letter saying that we'd be willing to pay for a rate increase to accomplish this. And we have developed some numbers, as you know, to suggest what that rate increase would be for us to move along our track as opposed to the track of any IOU, because we frankly don't know what the IOUs are really doing, because we don't compare ourselves with them specifically. The only thing I would caution you on, and I have done this at every single meeting that I've been here at the RMLD, is that we're very, very sensitive to any rate increases, because people are unemployed, people are on fixed income, and our charter says we try to provide the lowest possible cost to our customers. And no, that doesn't mean that we don't pursue other things that will incur a cost, and there may be some innovative ways of dealing with that. But I would just want you to be aware that cost is one of our primary goals to remaining who we are as an organization for all of our communities. And it's not just Redding, as you know. It's North Redding, Lynnfield, Wilmington, et cetera, as well as Redding and all the businesses that are involved there, too. So we take it extremely seriously whenever anyone says, "Just raise the rates a little bit." We don't necessarily do that. So we need really, really great justification from you to prove to us with data. We need data behind your letters, is what I'm trying to say. And I would open that up to yourself right now and to our other Commissioners.
Thank you, John. I always so appreciate your openness and your presentation. And I so welcome the opportunity for us to understand. Like, I'm looking forward to Chuck's presentation where he'll help us understand what you are dealing with and so forth. And I understand that cost has historically been a major concern of yours in terms of protecting your customers. And I noticed, I was on your website and exploring your history a little bit, and I noticed that last year was your 125th birthday celebration. Yeah, that is so.
Yeah, we don't look that old, do we?
So, yeah.
We're still accepting gifts, Gail. Maybe, Phil, yeah.
Well, we have a gift. We have a gift. And I'll speak more about it. I don't know. I have something written up that I wanted to, I think would explain some of the good rationale for our request. And whether you want me to do that now or hold it until public comment.
Well, we're kind of into public comment, but if you could hold it to just a couple of minutes, that would be really appropriate. And in the meantime, by the way, Jim Satterwhite, welcome. I see you signed on.
Thanks, Jim.
So go ahead, Gail.
Okay, all right. So this is kind of awkward, because it's kind of flowed differently. So this is something I've written. I wish I could just speak more extemporaneously, but I wanted to be sure I said everything that I wanted to say. So forgive me for a little formality here. So, good evening. My name is Gail Page, and I am here as Chair of the Green Sanctuary Climate Justice Group of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Redding and as Coordinator of the Greater Redding Alliance for Clean Energy, or GRACE. I hope the Commissioners and Colleen and Chuck all received the letter, the Steering Committee emailed to you earlier in the week, and that you've had a chance to read it. I would like to share my thoughts about the request Grace expressed at the last Board of Commissioners meeting and in the letter. So first, I have great respect and admiration for the Redding Municipal Light Department. Through the leadership of many Commissioners and staff through the years, you have done an admirable job of meeting your mission, providing safe, reliable and competitively priced electricity to your customers along with good customer service. Your financial balance sheet is remarkably strong, and the depth of knowledge and future planning skills demonstrated by your General Manager, Colleen, and your Director of Integrated Services, Chuck, are impressive. But times have changed. And actually, when I read about your birthday, it talked about 125 years. You've had the same mission. And I'm thinking that maybe it's time for a change. It has been historical, the mission you have been living by and that you've been living by so well. But there's been a big change, and that is the climate crisis, which is upon us in force. I hope that you are all among the many people who recognize that we, as humanity, is at a tipping point. Either we do what is needed now to turn back the climate crisis or we become accomplices in the worsening of the crisis. The climate crisis, unaddressed, ends in humanity paying a terrible price in human suffering, loss of life, and environmental destruction, as well as financially. Stopping the use of carbon-emitting fuels is one critical part of reversing climate change. Historically, electricity has been created from the burning of carbon-emitting fossil fuels. Our best hope for the future is a three-step process, having all electricity generated from clean, renewable, non-carbon-emitting sources, electrifying heating, cooling, cooking, and transportation, and reducing electricity usage through energy efficiency measures. You, as leaders of an electric power plant, are ideally placed to play a significant role in the solution to climate change. Grace asks that you take on this challenge. That is why we made our request, that at the least, we want the RMLD to meet both the renewable portfolio standard and the clean energy standard as clearly defined in law and as mandated for the IOUs. For the future, if the law changes, as seems likely, and different standards are imposed on the IOUs as people realize more and more what's going on with the climate crisis, then we want RMLD to comply with the new IOU standards and not just with any weaker standards for which the MLPs may have successfully lobbied, such as the Golden Bill. We are happy to discuss the IO rules with you as you have requested. We also want to understand what obstacles, if any, exist to fulfilling our request. We hope that through communication, mutual understanding, and problem-solving, we can, you can, we can find ways for RMLD to meet your goals along with the goals required to meet this moment of climate crisis. I want to believe that you, as the leaders of the Redding Municipal Light Department, are concerned enough about the climate crisis that you are willing to do something about it. Thank you.
Not bad, Gail. It was like four and a half minutes. It's pretty good. Did a good job. Thank you for that. And I think our September meeting, we will put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
To have you give us your data, what you feel that the IOUs are responsible for, and why you think that we can sort of do exactly what they're doing. You're going to see tonight a little bit about some of the differences, so you can incorporate that into your thinking as well. And by the way, I mean, we don't generate power. I mean, the only thing we really generate power on is perhaps solar panels and, you know, some storage and batteries. We buy power and we distribute it, and we service our territories. But we don't own a fossil plant that generates power, like the IOUs, a major, major difference. And you'll see some of that in Chuck's presentation tonight. Okay? Any other comments? If not, I'd like to move on to the.
I'm mute, Jim. Jim is raising his hand.
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Jim.
Yeah, hi, John. Thanks for your comments. I just wanted to respond to your request to us for data. I'm not quite sure what you're asking for, because essentially, we're asking, what IOUs need to do is they need to comply with the renewable portfolio standard and the clean energy standard. Those requirements are spelled out explicitly in law. It is a transparent public process. It's not some secret data that we have that we can provide you. And in fact, Chuck fully understands all of those rules. At the last board meeting, he presented slides which showed how much extra it would cost for, in coming years, for the RMLD to meet the CES and to meet the RPS. He's crunched those numbers already, by the fact that those, that he was able to compare them to something that means that the RMLD is currently following a policy, and by the fact that the numbers were positive to get to the RPS and the CES. Not significant, really, I don't think, but they were somewhat positive given those numbers that indicates that the RMLD is currently doing less according to the standards of the CES and the RPS than what.
Jim, if I may, thank you, but I'm, we've been participating and providing you with lots of data, lots of analysis, et cetera, about what we're doing and how we're trying to meet this. I want you, I want you to come back and show us what you think the IOUs are doing, what the data sources are that you're using. I want to see the numbers that you believe, not getting the numbers from us to say then that we're not meeting them. I want you, as a committee, to go and look at the numbers and come back and share those with us and do a definitive analysis of what you think the IOUs are doing. And then we'll compare with what we think they're doing. And I need you to be more involved. I need you to be more involved in this than just making requests from, this is a nice thing to do. We would love to be able to do anything that anyone requests of us, but there's a cost to doing it, not just in terms of the money, the time, and everything else. And we've been trying to do that. But I think it's incumbent upon Grace to go back and really define specifically what the IOUs are doing and why you think they are doing a much better job than what we're doing. Now, we'll put that as an agenda item on the September agenda for you to have, for the presentation to us about that. Is that clear?
All right, thanks, Jim.
Great, thank you.
Can I, could I also speak?
Yes.
This is John Rogers. I am also involved with the Greater Redding Alliance for Clean Energy, GRACE. So thank you. Thanks for your time. And I'll second what Gail has said, our appreciation for everything RMLD has done around clean energy. And you all, I have appeared before you before, and you know that, and I have enumerated the many ways that you all have pushed forward a clean energy agenda. And I recognize, as John Stempex says, you know, you're coming at this from a cost perspective. And I will point out, Gail mentioned the three areas that GRACE is interested in working with you on. And one of those is energy efficiency. I know that RMLD long ago recognized the financial value of energy efficiency, even though it would look to some as like a reduction in load and customers. The second is electrification, which is a newer effort. But I know you all have been thinking about this, you know, EV chargers and now getting into heat pumps and other electrification. The third one is clean energy. I will say, I've got to agree with Jim. The numbers are not hard to come up with. I mean, we can tell you what the IOUs are, the standards they are expected to meet, and they don't own power plants either, like you. You know, they're selling, they're principally pass-throughs. But they are required to have renewable energy or REX. They are required to have REX to prove that they have met those standards. And that, I think, is, and we will see, I think in Chuck's presentation later, we'll see, a discussion of those. What I don't, what I haven't seen, what I didn't see in Chuck's presentation earlier at the CAB meeting was what would it take to actually meet the standards? Not what are the cost implications of selling all the REX you have, but what are the cost implications of selling the REX, if I understood correctly? What are the cost implications of selling only, only, sorry, of retiring all the REX you have or retiring only those REX you would need to meet, to meet those standards? And those are different. I will say, I can, we are willing to provide more information about REX, since I know from past interactions with the Board that there's some confusion about what it means to hold and retire REX or to sell them. And so we're happy to provide some resources around that, because this is, that is probably the largest sticking point. You know, if you're buying wind and then selling the REX, you no longer have wind. You can't claim it as wind. That should be pretty clear and clear in case law and all. So that's gonna be an important distinction, so we're happy to share resources.
Hey, thank you, John. And if these numbers or data are so available, we look forward to seeing the presentation in September from the group, and we'd really like to see that. There's a, I'm not going to belabor this much more, but we, there's a very historical context to this whole REX question, which goes back about 10 years. And there was incredible division within the four towns. Phil, you remember this, if I'm wrong. And the overwhelming majority of the communities wanted to sell the REX. I'm just telling you that is historical perspective. It wasn't, I mean, times have changed. You're absolutely right in terms of what we need to do for clean energy, et cetera. But I'm going to tell you that back then, it was about significant, not small, significant cost differences in terms of retiring REX or holding on to REX. So, but we're gonna deal with it a little bit. I mean, we're open to looking at it. That's, and times change, as Gail said, and I completely agree. When times change, you need to readjust your mission if it needs to be readjusted and tweaked. So we're totally open to doing that. But at the end of the day, you know, we serve four communities. We don't serve a minority of the closed communities. We serve the majority of those communities. And we have to be very careful that we do that. So I hope you understand our position. It's not the Board of Commissioners having, you know, an idea one way or the other that they want to support. It's, we're trying to be responsive to all the people and all the businesses in each one of our communities. Is that fair?
Sure. I think we can return to that REX question next month, because.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for your openness and your willingness to talk with us and to work together. I'm thrilled and delighted, and we look forward to working with you next month.
Thank you. Let me just turn off this light back here. Okay, good. So if we could, I believe there are no approval of minutes. They're still being reviewed. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, appoint a person for.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Phil. Yes, please.
Yeah. I just want to acknowledge that Jim Blumley passed away last month.
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you.
Jim was a longtime RMLD employee for 42 years. At one point, he was the Assistant Manager, and when he retired, he was a project manager. And I just think, you know, I think it's appropriate for the Board to send along his condolences to his family, his wife Donna, who herself was a retired RMLD employee also at this point. And I think I speak for all the Board to pass our condolences along to the family, to Donna, and all the family of Jim Blumley. And I want to recognize him for, you know, and thank him for his service for all of the years, for 42 years he served the RMLD.
It's fantastic.
It would be appropriate for the Board to acknowledge his death and send our condolences to the family.
Thank you very much, Phil. That's excellent. If we could move on to the General Managers' Report. Colleen?
Hi, I'm just gonna speak a little bit about the budget. And according to the 20-year agreement, we need to get the budget to the CAB by October 1st. And we've been working on the budget since July. And we're going through the capital, and then it goes through the expense and power supply. And we should have it ready. We're not expecting any major changes in our budget other than pushing the substation again and some AMI metering. We've decided to ask a consultant to help us with the conversion, since the technology is changing so quickly. So those are the only two items that I think that will, you know, that are, will be major on there. And so I believe October 15th was the day that the CAB picked in the meeting before here last year. We did the expense and capital in the same night. I thought it went very well. I think you guys all thought it went very well. I'd like to recommend to do that again. So we don't do the CAB and the board meeting on the same night, obviously, but I think the CAB picked October 15th, so it would be after that. So I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that right now and have Tracy pick a day to get that scheduled.
Do the Commissioners have any feelings one way or the other about what date would be good to review the budget? Assuming after the, after the CAB, you're saying, right, Colleen?
Yes.
So that would be a separate meeting from the, our general meeting on a monthly basis?
No, we usually do, am I right, Tracy? We usually do it at the regular meeting, correct?
That's what I remember, but.
Yeah, I think we do everything together. It's a long meeting, but we do everything.
Okay, then why don't we just plan on doing that at our regular October meeting?
Okay.
Unless anyone has objections. Okay, good. Anything else, Colleen?
No, we have a couple of presentations to give, so I'm just gonna pass the baton from here. That's really all I had to add. Thank you.
So we're into the small cell wireless. Mr. McDonough? I didn't recognize you to begin with, but hi. Good to see you.
Good evening. How are you? So I just want to have a high-level presentation or discussion about what's coming towards us in the very near future regarding wireless communication and the installation and propagation of 5G signaling. Tracy, can I get the next page? So what prompted all of this really is the change in the FCC regulations. So the FCC has now classified wireless communication companies as utility companies, like an electric utility or a hardwired communication company such as Comcast or Verizon. So with that, with that change, wireless companies can now leverage the FCC guidelines to start installing small cell wireless facilities, which is 5G, in public and private rights-of-way within our communities. Now, they still need to apply to these municipal communities for the installation of this wireless equipment. There is a legal argument that the FCC orders pertaining to these small cell wireless facilities don't actually apply to RMLD. But I believe it's in the best interest that RMLD is working in good faith to accommodate this new technology. This new technology is coming, whether some people like it or not. It's coming. It's going to. This, this new technology is coming, whether some people like it or not, it's coming, it's going to be here for the foreseeable future. And then we also have our master agreement, which does not hold a, a shot clock, if you will, a, a basketball reference apparently. But, you know, we still work with the wireless communication companies and to have, you know, 60-day timeframes to respond to properly completed applications and 30 days from those completed applications to complete the work, if any work should be required. Tracy, can I get the next one? So permitting, and, and this both applies to the municipality of the community and the RMLD. So each wireless company needs to apply to each municipality, the town itself, and be granted permission to install that wireless facility in public and private right-of-ways within that community. That's the first step for these wireless companies. So much like when Comcast came in so many years ago, they needed to be granted permission from the municipality or the community to install their facilities within the public right-of-way, namely on, on the utility poles. Now, once a wireless company is granted permission from the municipality or the community to install their equipment in the right-of-way, that wireless company also needs to enter into agreement with RMLD through its poll license agreement process and its joint owner. So as everyone knows, within the four towns that we service, we're joint owners on those poles with Verizon. Now, some of those poles are, Verizon are the custodians of those poles. And some of those poles, Redding Light is the custodian of those poles. But regardless, the wireless company still needs to have an agreement with both parties. Whoever the joint owners are, they need to have an agreement with them before any work or before any application can be made. And then once the wireless company, A, has the permission or the permit from the municipality to install, and they've signed an agreement with the joint owners of that facility, then they can start making application to the RMLD to install some of their wireless facilities. Now, they can apply for up to 10 licenses per application. So each installation of a wireless facility requires a license. There will be one wireless facility on a pole that will require one license. They may apply for 10 licenses at one time. And then once they apply, that's when RMLD will start its work. And Tracy, can I get the next slide? We have a, we have a process flow here of how it's all going to work. So, uh, once we have all the applications and the agreements in place and permits in place, the wireless company will make application to Redding Light. That application will be assigned to one of our engineers. Once our engineer receives that application, they will now first and foremost notify the respective community of that application. So if they're applying for Redding, Redding gets notified of the actual applications and their locations. And the same goes for Wilmington, North Redding, and Linfield as well. We will notify the town. And that's very, and I'll, I'll get into why, but that's very important of why we need to have this open line of communication with each community. So once they apply, you know, we just double check to make sure that they have permit within the town to be in the right-of-way. And they have a current master agreement signed or entered into with Redding Municipal Light. Assuming all of that stuff is in place, incorrect, and proper, then we start getting into our analysis. So we'll start looking at the pole location that they want to start installing this wireless facility on. Now, specifically, we're looking at pole loading information. Some of this equipment can and will be heavy, and we need to make sure that our structure can handle the added load or the added stress to that facility. And we perform that calculation through a software that we have called Pole Formant. Pole Formant looks specifically at those types of stresses and loads on the poles. Now, depending on the custodian of the pole, like I mentioned, Verizon is the custodian of some poles, Redding is custodian of others. Depending on who the custodian is and if the pole is sufficient, maybe that pole needs to be replaced. If that pole needs to be replaced to a larger pole or a higher class pole to accommodate the additional loading, either Redding or Verizon would need to replace that. Uh, Redding and Verizon have a, a process in place for the replacement of poles. Official notification through a 605 form. Pole petitions would need to be required if we're going outside of the three-foot boundary of the existing pole. But all of that will still follow the very same process we have for pole replacements within the service territory that we have, depending on who the custodian is. Now, uh, once we look at the analysis of this pole and depending on what they're trying to install, where Redding Light may have to do some work in order to accommodate this new signaling system. And that could be as simple as rearranging some facilities on the pole to create additional space. Or it could be as complex as replacing to pole to a pole taller in height or wider in class to accommodate the new load. Now, Redding will supply the wireless company with an estimate of the work that needs to be performed in order to accommodate their new equipment. And they will have to pay Redding Light in order to provide those changes or provide those updates. Once those changes are agreed upon and signed and paid, we'll perform the work. Redding Light will perform that work on our facilities and make that pole ready. So that's also known as make-ready work. So they'll make that pole ready for the installation of the new wireless facility. Once we have all of that completed, we will inform the wireless company that this pole is ready for the installation of their facility and their wireless equipment. Now, the wireless company has two options as far as who they can actually have install that equipment. They can contract with Redding Light to have that work done, and we can install the equipment for them. Or they can subcontract to a qualified third-party line company that would be able to install that equipment for them. Now, even with getting a third party or having Redding do it, we have within our master agreements a set of specifications that need to be followed and that will be inspected after the installation of that equipment. So they must follow the Redding Light's specification guidelines. We have a set of drawings. There's quite a few of them, as a matter of fact, approximately 40 different drawings that we had completed just for this process, so they could follow all of these guidelines. So, uh, once they have that equipment installed, naturally, Redding Light will inspect it to make sure that it is proper and it is following our guidelines, and we can go from there. Now, Redding Light will also notify the towns upon the completion of that work. Tracy, can I get the next slide, please?
Before you, before you go off that slide, can I ask a question? Go back to that slide. It seems, and I saw this presentation at the CAB meeting, it seems to me that we're going to be involved with a cost here. I don't think anybody's addressed, I don't, you may have addressed it, John, and I may have missed it earlier. But it seems to me that's going to, the RMLD is going to have a cost here to do something, even if we, even if it's done by a third party at this point. Is there any addressing here as to the cost of the RMLD getting reimbursed for these costs?
Yes, absolutely. So there's application fees for us to even perform the analysis. And any work that needs to be performed on that pole to accommodate this new equipment, the wireless company is paying for it. So it's not going to generate a cost directly to the RMLD to get this facility installed. It will be at their cost.
Okay. Did that include the inspection cost that you'll have to go and inspect this thing?
Part of the application.
Done by a third party?
Even if the work's done by a third party, yeah. Our, the engineer who receives the, uh, who receives the project, once the installation is complete, will go out and take a look at it. So the inspection for the actual installation won't be significant. But it still needs to be done to make sure that it is, that it meets our specifications. But all of that is, is incorporated into the make-ready work and the application fees.
Okay.
Uh, good questions, Phil. John, just a, on a follow-up of that. If, if you had T-Mobile and AT&amp;T and Verizon and three others all wanting to put equipment on a pole, how, how do you decide who puts the equipment on a pole? Or do they do it, the next pole down, they put their equipment on, and the third one puts it next pole down?
Yeah, it's first come, first served. And then, um, so if AT&amp;T applies and we grant the license to AT&amp;T, that pole is theirs. Uh, or they have the license for that pole, naturally, we wouldn't be able to, uh, to give another license to another company to install the very same equipment on that pole.
But 30 feet away, they could install it on a different pole?
Yes, they could. They could put it on a separate pole, uh, you know, the next section down. They could install their, uh, they could, they could get a license for that. Now, that's not to say that, you know, RMLD has reserved capacity. So we have equipment that we need to install on some of our poles for switching. Large scatamate switches, recloses, capacitor banks, risers, things of that nature. So RMLD will be reserving pole capacity for ourselves, for our own projects to make sure that, uh, it's not impacting our ability to conduct business and distribution within our own system.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Now, notifications, this part's very important to us. So the town is requested, so we're asking each individual community to notify RMLD when a wireless company has been granted permission or a permit to install some of their equipment in the public right-of-way. We'd, we'd like to know if that has been given. It's just a heads up so that we know to expect some type of communication from that wireless company regarding a master agreement or attaching onto our facilities. Now, RMLD will also notify the town, and this is to promote communication between the communities and RMLD of each application, location, and the proposed wireless facility. So we want to be able to take that application from the wireless company and notify each respective town to say, hey, uh, AT&amp;T has applied for these 10 licenses at this location on these poles. And we're going through the process of, uh, of, of the analysis of that location. So the town knows that applications are in process and that we're looking at them. Now, um, we'll, we'll also notify the town, the status of that application or that license for that location. So it is possible that AT&amp;T submits an application for 10 licenses. Uh, and after our analysis is completed, we grant AT&amp;T nine licenses. Because one pole either is reserved capacity for RMLD's express use or there's an issue with the actual location that we're not able to provide them with the license. Now, grant you, RMLD will make every effort to work with the wireless company in order to get their facility in, even if it's, you know, picking a separate location for their wireless facility other than the one that they're, they were originally requesting. So, you know, we'll be working with them in order to accommodate their needs for their propagation. So 5G is line of sight. So they're going to want to be able to have their facilities in direct line of sight with one another in order for these things to communicate. And if we can't get one of their wireless facilities at their requested location, we'll certainly work with them to get that wireless facility located somewhere that does work for them and that it satisfies their propagation results. Now, uh, it is possible that, you know, we're unable to accommodate their needs. And, uh, we grant them the nine and not the 10th license. And in that case, we'll notify the town, let them know, hey, you know, we gave them these nine, but this 10th one, we were unable to accommodate. So just an FYI or a heads up, they may be contacting you so that they can get a pole petition hearing or a request to install their own pole in the right-of-way. That pole naturally won't have anything to do with RMLD's facility or our distribution efforts. It will be for the express use of that wireless company for their facilities. But we want to be open and clear with each community, letting them know where these licenses stand or where these applications stand, so that they're not receiving information secondhand or through a miscommunication process, thinking that, you know, RMLD just said no, and, you know, that's the end of it. We'll be providing the information as to why that application or that license was denied and why we were not able to accommodate that wireless facility at that location. And, you know, alternative locations were not acceptable to the wireless company. But we want to be able to have that conversation with each individual community regarding these things, so we have an open line of communication. Now, a wireless company may also want to install, uh, some of their facilities in an area that RMLD doesn't have any facilities. Uh, and whether it be in an underground application or somewhere that we don't have any poles, you know, they may be looking for a pole or some type of structure to have their 5G signaling on the top of. And if we don't have facilities in that area, they're still going to need electric service in order to supply all of their equipment. And if that's the case, you know, then RMLD may have to get involved with supplying them with some type of electric service. So it is possible that, you know, where they're looking to put a wireless facility, we don't have our facilities there, but they're going to be looking for electric service in that application. And then, you know, that'll, that'll open up another conversation about how we're going to get electric service to that location. Can I get the next page, Tracy?
One, one more question there. Go back again.
Yep.
Sorry, sorry, but you know, I got the preview, so I got questions. You know, if you installed, if the, if the new pole gets installed, who's responsible for that? If a car hits the pole?
Is, is it, are you talking on a sole-owned?
Yes.
That is up to the wireless company. Because they will be the owner of that pole, not RMLD and not Verizon.
If RMLD gets called out to replace that pole, what's, what's the point? Is there a plan for that?
Uh, if, if we have a facility on the pole, like electric service to feed that pole, what we will do is we will make our equipment safe. And we will make it safe for, uh, public and our employees. And we'll, you know, we'll remove those, those conductors from the area. But Redding Light will not be performing any type of work on that type of installation. That is not our pole. We're not responsible for it. We're not the custodians of it.
Okay.
John, uh, I just, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add a follow-up on Phil's question about fees. If there's a slide coming up, then I'll hold off about the fees you're going to charge, but if not, I'll ask it now.
No, I, I, I don't have a slide that has the fee schedule associated with it. The fee schedule is laid out within the master agreement. Uh, I don't know, the committee has had a chance to review that master agreement as of yet.
By committee, do you mean us or do you mean somebody else?
You guys, the, the board.
Okay. So, um, does it just spell out the FCC numbers, the 270 recurring and the, the hundred dollar per pole? Is that the numbers you're using or are you using something else?
Yeah, those numbers are, are spelled in there.
So is that, is that like a fixed thing or are you doing a, a, are you just using those numbers and nothing else?
Uh, no, we, we actually had our, our own analysis done, which aligned with that.
Okay, good. That, I just wanted to ask you about that because I know there's some, just from my, the work I do, I'm aware that some, there's some confusion on this point, that some folks think that these are the, the FCC numbers are the only fees you can charge, and that, and I guess you already know that they're not. Like this, um, uh, this hundred dollar application fee, in some jurisdictions, the utility has found that it's actually costing them a thousand. You know, you laid out the perfect process and it's very involved, and as Phil pointed out, it costs us a lot of money. That some jurisdictions are able to charge a thousand or 1,500 or even more, where the FCC says, oh, you can charge 100. But you have to sit down and justify it, to walk through and, uh, and just stop me, I know. But if, if I'm, if I'm saying stuff you already know and probably am, but if you can document what your costs are in hours and gas and everything else, you can charge the higher fees. And then you'll be ready if the industry wants to attack you and say, you're charging too much, you're going to have your analysis. So I'm surprised that they came back as, as low as that, because some other places are charging a lot more than, than the minimum.
Can, can I add to that?
Go ahead. Please, Colleen.
So the way we're doing it, Dave, is we have application fee. We have make-ready for all the money that we spend. And then there's the 270 per pole per year for static.
Right.
And any of those are going to collect. We are not going to allow our customers to take a loss on any of this. But if you're specifically talking about the static amount for the pole, we're going to leave it at 270 until we can determine that a static installation. cuz just like John says, if a pole gets hit and we have to go out there, and we're gonna have their poles clearly marked, so they know they're not our poles. Uh, but if we have to go out there, they're gonna get a bill. That has nothing to do with the two seventy for the static.
That's right. That, and that's the annual, like, rental, uh, fee, the two seventy. But, right, I see what you're talking about.
Yep. Yep. And even in the, our estimate for the make-ready work is going to incorporate the engineering and analysis and inspection of that installation that they have to pay upfront before any of that work is completed.
Okay. So that could be, so you will charge more than the hundred bucks, in essence.
Yeah, that's just the application fee. That's it.
But even the application fee, you could charge fifteen hundred. You, you, people are doing that right now, just so you know. People are charging the fifteen hundred for an application fee, plus the make-ready, because they, they can show that the cost, as Phil was saying, when you walk through all that stuff that you're doing and all the communications with the town and the initial site visits, the post-inspection, all that, you know, it takes forever. And a hundred bucks doesn't even come close. And, and that's, and I'm not talking about the make-ready, I'm talking about all of your overhead and all of your, you know, you, you can charge a lot more than a hundred bucks, and other people are charging ten times that much.
Right. And we, at, at the end of the day, we still have to justify those numbers as well.
Yes, you do, you do. But I think it could be easy to do. So I think, you know, Phil's on the right track there, you know, that, that you, you, they just have to document all that and then say, hey, man, this is costing us two thousand a pole, and you can get the money. And if they challenge you, you're gonna have the analysis. That's all. So that's, wanna make sure that that was.
I, I, that's a very important discussion, and I, I think that, that, um, the commissioners are absolutely right, that we need to, at a minimum, cover all of our costs, including fully loaded costs.
Uh, yes.
And, and not just like on an hourly basis cost, but wrapped in with all the overhead charges, et cetera.
Exactly.
Part of that. And John, I'm, I'm sure you're.
And don't let, and, because, because the, the industry has pushed the FCC around, and now the FCC is trying to push us around. But this is the pushback, and, and it's also a big revenue opportunity if we push hard. That's all. I just wanted to.
Yeah, if, if this were, uh, you know, a perfect universe, uh, obviously what we'd like to do is put up our own equipment, lease it to them. Uh, and they can buy the licenses off of us for all of which they want. I understand we can't do.
It's a, it's a good idea. Well, as we tried it, it was a noble effort, it didn't work out, but, uh, well, as we liked the apartment, did try that. Uh, in Boston, what you have is like companies like Exinet. You asked earlier, John, about, or somebody did about, well, what if, you know, ATT today, Verizon tomorrow? Well, then there's companies like Exinet that'll host for all of those. And so then RMLD would just be dealing with Exinet and basically be that middleman, as you described, that maybe we would be. So that's another way that multiple entities could be on one pole through an entity like Exinet.
Right, with multiple antennas at the top of it.
John, uh,
Exactly.
But just a follow-up question. Obviously, these, all these units are going to be using electricity. Um, if you, we became saturated in our region, our territory, uh, could you develop some just, uh, back-of-the-envelope numbers in terms of how many kilowatt-hours we're talking about in terms of usage?
Uh, you know what? I haven't seen usage for one single unit yet. I, I, I don't know what they're, what each activity is doing, but.
They're gonna be pretty high usage, I think, because they're very high frequencies, as you know. And so the power supplies they're going to be using, you know, knowing from my history, they're gonna be eating up a lot of power. And I'm just wondering if we can charge them differential rates for that, by the way.
John, hi, John, hi, this is Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, I, you know, just, just, you know, along this discussion, I, I deal with this as well every day.
Oh, great.
Well, one of the, one of the numbers that we came up with, the sixty amp service running all year, pretty constant, we came up with about a four thousand dollar usage for, for that, just, just for a ballpark number. You can't really predict what it's going to be up and down because it's, because it, it, there's no, there's no real number there yet for, for study. But ju- ju- just if you use that as a number, that, that's one number that we've, we've, we've thrown around a little bit.
So that's per pole, Bob?
Per, per year.
Per year, per pole?
Per year, per pole with one, one antenna on it.
Oh, excellent.
What was, what was the number? What was the number again, Bob? What was the usage?
Four, four thousand dollars. That's what we came up with.
Wow.
Four thousand, that's excellent. So let's, like, let's put an antenna on every pole.
That might, that might come, John. That might come.
Okay, sorry.
That's, that's, that's definitely coming. Exinet, Verizon, everybody, that, that, that competition is an onslaught right now to get to those poles. And it's, it's, it's absolutely amazing. Every company wants to be there.
Yeah, a- ab- absolutely. And, you know, there's an article in the Wall Street Journal talking about this earlier this week, and how, uh, they were just astounded about how 5G blows away 4G. It's just, like, not even close. So I see there's gonna be a huge rush into this, so that's great.
Great. Tracy, can I get the, uh, next slide? I wanna go into some of the aesthetics. So, um, concerning aesthetics with these new installations, uh, it's, it's recommended that each town reviews the RMLD's, uh, master agreement, which also holds our technical specifications when either creating or reviewing an aesthetic policy so that these two documents align with one another. So we wanna have the town's aesthetic policy dovetail in with RMLD's, uh, technical specifications regarding this equipment. Now, uh, the town's aesthetic policy will differ clearly from Redding Light's technical specifications. The town's aesthetic policy can cover a wide range of applications and installations, including decorative streetlights within the downtown area. Uh, some wireless companies, uh, may elect to start changing out some of their streetlight poles in order to turn them into 5G antennas. The, uh, now naturally, that is outside of RMLD's purview, but, um, that, that, that needs to follow the aesthetic policy. Also, in some applications, they may be looking to install some of these antennas on buildings, which also would need to fall under the aesthetic policy that the town creates and implements. Uh, but, uh, we think that the two policies should dovetail with one another and align with one another so that the two policies aren't contradicting one another. Now, RMLD will, uh, help review each aesthetic policy and provide comment on that to ensure that they are, um, aligned and that we don't have any type of contradictions within those two policies. So we will certainly work with the towns in order to get an aesthetic policy created and so that it works well for everybody involved. Um, Tracy? So here's a, uh, this is just a quick ex- excerpt from our master agreement and the technical specifications that we had created. So we have approximately forty drawings, um, at the end of our master agreement, which, uh, cover a wide range of installations and applications that pertain to RMLD's distribution area. So on, uh, sheet COM thirty-five dash one is a typical installation uh, with a three-phase primary on top and a primary lateral showing the antenna at the top of the pole. Naturally, everything is specked out as far as heights, distances, where things can be located. Uh, and then, uh, having their, uh, radio cabinet installed on that pole as far as the height's concerned for that, the size of it. And then also the metering equipment that is associated with that, where that's to be located. And probably, most importantly, the disconnect switch for it all. So naturally, if we have our employees, our personnel working on these poles that have a 5G antenna at the top of it, Redding Light needs a way to disable that antenna temporarily so that our employees aren't exposed to any type of harmful radiation or wireless transmission from that antenna. So each app, each installation, each and every installation will have some type of disconnect switch that's clearly marked so that we can work on that pole safely. So the COM thirty-five dash one has everything contained on the pole. The, uh, other sheet, the COM thirty-six dash one, it's the same-size pole, same-class pole, same installation, but the equipment is pad-mounted or remote-mounted off to the side of it, which in some applications may make sense because it can't be placed on the pole. And again, you know, we have specifications regarding that equipment as far as where it can be located and the distance from the pole. But the, the town's aesthetic policy will also need to align with this regarding that equipment, what it looks like, its sizes, where it can be placed, ADA regulations that they can't violate, things of that nature. Tracy, next slide, please. Uh, here is a, uh, very simple installation of a 5G wireless facility. This pole is a very clean-cut pole. There's not a whole lot going on here. Uh, mostly, it contains the wireless facility equipment on that pole. It does have a single-phase secondary, uh, lateral attached to it to provide electric service for that pole. But from what you can see here, you have all of the equipment, you have your meter, your disconnect switches down at the bottom. About midway up, the larger brown box is their radio cabinet. And at the very top, that cylinder is their antenna. Now, uh, this is a standard, average installation. I have seen worse and I have seen better. But this is something you can expect to see going up throughout, uh, the four communities that we serve. Uh, and, uh, that's it. So, uh, any more questions, gentlemen and ladies?
Yeah, I got, I just got one comment. Go back one slide, if you would please, Tracy. You know, I, I hope that, you know, the public sees this, and I think the aesthetics. I know Colleen mentioned the CAVB, that she's reached out to the town managers, each of the town and the aesthetics. I mean, I think it's, you know, the message that we should get across the public is the public should actually, you know, also, you know, make, send a message to the town that aesthetics are very important here. I mean, I don't know if I'd be too thrilled if I saw this in front of, in front of my house, or where I live, you know, at this point. So I, I, you know, I'm kinda speaking, and I know I'm probably preaching to the choir right now, but, and if anybody else is out there listening to this and, you know, is concerned about the aesthetics, I think they should, you know, reach out to the town and let them know on this, as to what's.
Yes, I agree with you. I, I think that, uh, and it's not just one pole, it might be multiple poles all the way along the road, right? I mean, doing, looking exactly like this.
That's correct. Yes, a- absolutely. So this is, this is something that could be on every single or the ma- the vast majority of utility poles throughout the, uh, service territory.
Is this higher than thirty feet, by the way?
Uh, this application here?
Yes.
That, that's a forty-foot pole.
So would ours, ours would be thirty foot, though, right?
Uh, well, the majority of our poles in our service territory are higher than forty feet.
Ah, okay.
So, uh, John, this is Bob, again?
Yes, hi, Bob.
I, you know, ju- just as FYI, you know, this penetration has already occurred in, you know, Medford, Lynn, Revere, Everett. Um, it's, it's, it's on, ongoing right now. So, y- you know, it, it's, uh, in multiple North Shore communities, um, you're, you're seeing these antennas go up already. So I think it's, uh, it's, it's something that, you know, people start to, to notice, um, on a more regular basis. And, and these things, you know, they communicate, their range is about five hundred feet. Um, and they are, they are targeting high, you know, h- high-traffic areas first, right? That's.
Right.
Low street, that, that, that's the traffic area, but, um, they, they, they are everywhere.
Bob, John, can I ask a question of Bob?
Please, go ahead.
Bob, have you heard any complaints about the aesthetics in those towns? Anybody?
Um, I, I, the, the aesthetics, um, not, not so much surprisingly. I think the, the issue comes where if you try to move one of these, um, because they, they're designed to be where they are by an RF engineer, and a hundred and forty feet matters, you know, a hundred fifty feet between pole spans does matter. Um, so if the town agrees to a location and the en- you know, the engineers agree to a location, and then you go out and you find that you need to move it for some reason, I, I, I see that comes up more as a, an issue than, than aesthetics does. But, um, you know, these things are predetermined where they need to be. Um, so I, I think.
John, can I add some?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Colleen.
Um, so just to add on to what John says, uh, the communication is really important with the towns. Um, I think you all know that I sent out our master agreement and technical specifications to each of the towns. We are hoping to do a Zoom call with them. I just talked to the cab about, about this. Um, we did our phone call with Redding, uh, first because, um, the town's required to have an aesthetic policy, and the town of Redding had gotten a copy of a policy and adopted it from Burlington, Mass. And the issue with that is Burlington is not an MLP territory. So the aesthetic policy doesn't really dovetail in to our master agreement. For example, if the aesthetic policy says, you know, these should not be put on poles that are greater than thirty feet, but most of the utility poles are forty, forty-five feet, then you could see that there's already gonna be an issue. Um, John and I, we said that we would help to review these, but it's really up to the town's council to provide them with, with an aesthetic document. I am reaching out to the town of Norwood because that would be a more applicable aesthetic policy that maybe, uh, I can send as example. And I've have, have sent other examples of MLP ter- territory aesthetics to the towns. We do need to have a permit from a town saying that AT&amp;T, Verizon has a permit to be in the right of way, no different from Verizon, from Comcast. So you will not see any of these things go up if there's no permit from the town. So just, and the, because the communication is so important. If somebody's hearing something that doesn't sound right, you know, RMLD said no, you, somebody needs to call me, cuz we're gonna be really communicating to prevent that from happening. We don't want any issues. There are wireless companies out there whose business model is to own their own pole. They have no want to attach to an existing pole. They want their own pole. They might wanna rent antennas from the top. And I don't want it to come across that, that RMLD is not being, uh, you know, supportive or compliant. We are really trying to make sure that we minimize any additional poles where we can uh, and work with each of the towns. So just wanted to add that. The, the master agreement, as I wrote in the email, is substantially complete. We have some issues like a motor vehicle hits the pole. It's a Verizon, RMLD pole, and the antenna comes down. So clearly, the wireless company wants us to take full responsibility for their equipment on our pole. So there's some liability issues that we have to nail down and other things. But for the most part, they're just about complete, but we don't have any signed contracts yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. And John, thank you very much. This is very, very informative.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, if we could move on to the, uh, integrated resources, uh, Chuck?
Okay. Good evening. So, uh, I wanted to begin this evening with, uh, just an update on what's going on with the load. Uh, I know that, uh, one of the concerns is how we're being impacted by COVID nineteen. And, uh, I've got the first seven months of twenty twenty here and wanted to point out that, uh, while we experienced low loads, uh, lower than forecasted loads in the early part of the year, June and July, we've actually experienced loads, uh, greater than, uh, what was forecast. We're currently running about three percent, uh, below, uh, our forecast. But what we're not seeing is the, uh, anticipated, uh, load reductions, uh, as COVID nineteen impacts. So, uh, the early part of the year, the loads are down because it was, uh, warmer and we didn't have quite as many heating degree days, uh, to deal with. The, uh, second part, uh, of this shows that, uh, it's been warmer during the summer, and so we've had more cooling degree days, and our loads are actually up over, uh, what was projected. So all in all, uh, we seem to be holding our own, uh, at this point. Next slide, please, Tracy. The, um, the next couple of slides are, are the repeats of the, uh, the purchase power, uh, expenses, the overall, uh, purchase power, the energy capacity, uh, and transmission. I don't wanna spend, uh, a lot of time with them. It's, uh, pretty straightforward, and, uh, we've been going along, uh, as we, uh, anticipated, uh, pretty much, in the budget. So, uh, next, uh, slide, please. Uh, the energy costs, which are about eighty percent of our budget, have been tracking very closely. If we can, uh, go to the, uh, next one. Um, capacity costs, uh, coming in a little bit, uh, lower, uh, than was. Um, capacity costs, uh, coming in a little bit lower, uh, than was.
Chuck, you froze, I think.
Budgeted. Now, keep in mind that a lot of this capacity cost haven't come up. Am I back now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so we've got our capacity costs. Um, those are set, uh, mostly the year before. Uh, but, uh, because loads are down, uh, we've been seeing, uh, a little bit of, uh, reduction in, uh, the, uh, peaking cost for the year. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is transmission. This is, uh, where we see, uh, probably the most real time benefit from, uh, the peak shaving activities that we have, uh, in place. Uh, our generator, our battery energy storage system and the shred the peak program that we've been running. Uh, those produce essentially real time transmission, uh, benefits for us. And, uh, as you can see, uh, we're doing fairly well, uh, with the May and June uh, results in terms of what we were expecting to see even with the higher heating loads. So, uh, next, please. Uh, this slide, um, is fairly interesting in that if you take a look at January, February, March and April, uh, we actually had sales back to the pool, which is in keeping with the fact that our loads uh, were lower than anticipated. So we had, uh, more resources um, than we could use internally and we sold those back. June, remember, uh,
I think we lost you again, Chuck. Chuck?
Uh, on the slide, we reversed that, our loads are up now.
Let's put one of the first five G poles right near Chuck's house.
Yeah, John, can you make that happen?
I'm on it tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, am I back now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I apologize, I'm up in New Hampshire and, uh, we haven't even gotten to three G yet. So, uh, we're, we're running a little behind here. So, uh, what I wanted to show with this slide is that, uh, June and July will be back into, uh, us selling or us purchasing uh, from the market because the loads are higher than we budgeted. Um, so, uh, next slide, please. Um, I wanted to give everybody an update. Um, the energy bills, uh, passed, uh, this year, H forty-nine thirty-three and Senate twenty-five hundred. Uh, because of the mismatch between the two, uh, they have gone to conference committee. Uh, what was originally filed, uh, a little over a year ago as the golden bill, uh, was incorporated into H forty-nine thirty-three and is part of roadmap twenty fifty legislation. The, uh, conference committee to resolve the differences between the uh, energy legislation, uh, packages passed in the House and the Senate, uh, has six members on it. Five of those members, uh, serve municipal, uh, light plant communities. The sixth member of the committee is Representative Golden, who actually supported them. So we're hopeful, uh, that the clean energy standard, uh, bill, uh, will come through conference committee. The conference committee on, um, hiatus, uh, pending the, uh, September primaries and then, uh, they will come back and do their work. Uh, we're expecting that that be completed in September. When it's completed, uh, it will be effective upon signature of the government, of the governor. And, um, basically, uh, the golden bill made it relatively impact. So the M L Ps uh, got what, uh, they had, uh, hoped for uh, in the legislation that was, uh, filed a year and a half ago. Um, next slide, please. This is a repeat of a slide that was put up, uh, last month. Uh, I just pulled the other, uh, compliance standards off so that, uh, we could see uh, what the compliance with Golden Bill looks like and what our portfolio, uh, is structured. The, um, right hand side, uh, of this.
Excuse me, Chuck. Uh, someone's got some, uh, noise in the background. Might you, uh, mute your phone, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, um, basically, uh, what this shows is that, uh, municipal light plants are on a steeper curve in the early years, uh, from twenty twenty-one to about twenty thirty. At that point, uh, the municipal light plants, uh, have caught up with the requirements of, uh, the clean energy standard. And, uh, we would be on the same path to achieve what, uh, the investor owned utilities are achieving, which is the eighty percent, uh, carbon free emissions by twenty fifty. So, uh, what you're looking at with, uh, the portfolio for our M L D, the light blue, uh, the medium blue, the dark blue and the green, uh, is the combination of resources uh, currently under contract, uh, with our M L D and for which we control the recs. So we can put together, uh, composite packages to, uh, make sure that we comply with the, uh, requirements of the golden bill and we're in pretty good shape to be able to do that through twenty thirty-two. So we have about twelve years of, um, resources that we've actually got under contract uh, that we can use for, uh, compliance purposes. Uh, next slide, please.
Can I ask, oh, go ahead. I just had a quick question when you get a chance.
Uh, on this slide, previous slide?
Yeah, it was on the previous slide in the golden build trajectory.
Okay.
So what is it that is your understanding of the bill that's now kind of on track? That what, what does it require us to do, uh, by twenty thirty?
Well, this would be the, um, compliance year by year that we would, uh, need to meet and we would have to have, uh, some combination of, uh, non-carbon emitting resources, uh, where we would have the recs or the effects, uh, as a combined package, uh, meet that, uh, level of, uh, non-carbon emissions in our portfolio.
But what is that level? What percentage?
That level, uh, percentage changes, um, year to year.
Yeah, but twenty thirty is, it sets a target for twenty thirty, right?
Okay, the, the target for twenty thirty, uh, is roughly, uh, three hundred out of seven hundred. Uh, so it's probably about forty percent.
All right, because I'm, I mean, I, my understanding is that a bill passed the House on July thirty-first. Um, that
That is correct.
And that that bill is, uh, requires us to reach, and it's gonna, and my understanding is it's gonna be the bill. And then it requires us to reach fifty percent by twenty thirty. Um, so I just want to be clear about, it kind of goes back to the original, the comment to the beginning of the meeting is what is it that the law makes us do? And how is it different, if at all, from IOUs? So my understanding is under this, and the bill is actually, um, is H four, forty-nine twelve, section fifteen, says that we, and it passed a couple of weeks ago, says we have to meet fifty percent non-carbon emitting by twenty thirty and seventy-five percent by twenty forty. And also, it also gets us out of the, having to worry about this whole rec political issue because it doesn't, it, it, we can sell them if we want to, but that will, that will not be able to count the sold, the, the electricity for which erects have been sold. We will not be able to count that as renewable energy under that definition of this law. So it, it means we don't have to worry about the politics of that anymore. We just have to worry about what our numbers are. That's my understanding. And my further understanding of it is that this bill that is passed allows us to count nuclear as our non-carbon, which is great. And that the difference between this and what the IOUs have to do is they, that they can't count nuclear if they use it. And that, and, and we are about fifteen percent nuclear. So I believe that I may be wrong, that the net difference of all this is that we're able to count fifteen percent of our portfolio as being non-carbon, but the IOUs are not. So, but we still have to hit fifty, fifty percent in, uh, eight and a half years with fifteen percent that already in the can with nuclear plus a few percent that we already have that's renewable, uh, certified. That's my, that's my understanding and I hope that's correct and if it is, that it's helpful. Just to kind of, everybody to understand where, where we are in the law.
Such a recent, uh, passing, I suggest we, uh, we go back and take a look at that bill. I think that, that's great input, Dave. Thank you.
Okay, I'll send the link along to this bill and, but I, I gather that this is what it's gonna be.
Sounds like it would be good news for us.
I mean, it certainly, if it's, if, if, if this bill is, is the bill that is gonna pass and be signed by the governor, then it certainly clears up all these different confusing things of, well, what might we be required to do? And what if it's this, what if it's that? It's like, well, here it is, we got a law now. And then, okay, there is the law and then it's just how are we gonna comply with it and at what rate? And it looks like, um, Chuck, you've got us on a straight line where we go, you know, we go a straight line from here to twenty thirty to hit that fifty percent. So then it's just the question of how are we doing that? Um, and maybe the board can be involved in, you know, helping on the, just, you know, make, help make those decisions on what we want to be doing from here to twenty thirty to hit that fifty percent.
Can, can I interject?
Please. Who's Colleen? Go ahead.
Um, the bill that's passing is the one that the municipal light plants, uh, put in to the legislation. So, you know, our recommendation for the sustainable policy thirty is to follow the golden bill. We are just waiting for the nuances of that bill to be, uh, decided. Um, so that's part of what Chuck is trying to explain exactly what we're recommending for the policy and how we would meet those goals was not really what we were presenting tonight because we're still waiting for that to come out. That's where the policy's coming from that we're hoping that you will vote on in September.
Okay, I'll, I'll send along the bill that passed on the thirty-first of July.
So it seems there's a confusion between the two bills, right? Between the golden bill, uh, definition.
I think, I think this is the bill. It incorporates elements of what was the golden bill, but this is the bill. I, I may be wrong. I'll just, I'll send it around and somebody can correct, uh, if it's wrong, but just so that, I'm just sharing what I've learned and I could be wrong, but I think this is correct, but.
No, actually, Dave, you, you are correct. That is the, the bill. Um, Tracy, can you go to slide eight, please? So what was passed in the legislature in the House was Bill H forty-nine thirty-three. That's the House's energy bill. That includes, among other things, what the original golden bill that got rolled up into H forty-nine thirty-three. The Senate energy bill is S twenty-five hundred. And those two have gone to a conference committee, three senators, three representatives to be, uh, ironed out. And what comes out of that conference committee will be the energy legislation. But we're waiting for that to come through. Pieces of the bills may fall out, uh, as the House and the Senate, uh, do some negotiations. But, uh, Dave is right, H forty-nine thirty-three is what contains the guidance that we have been waiting for. Uh, and as soon as that is passed, we will understand, uh, what is expected of us to comply with the statutory, uh, regulations.
Right, I just have it as H forty-nine twelve. That's the bill that passed on the thirty-first, H forty-nine twelve. I'll send it around now.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. And let's try to resolve this by perhaps the September meeting. Would that be a good target?
Yeah, I mean, I think if this is about to pass, we ought to have the law pass and we know what the, what the law requires us to do.
Yes.
I think that's put the horse before the cart. And once we know what the law is, then I think we should be tweaking the policy. So, okay, here's the law. And how are we getting there? Um, and if, you know, or exceeding if, if there's some push to do that or not, but I do think we need the law before we try to do a policy, but that's just me.
Yep. No, I, I think the rest of the commissioners would agree with you.
Yep, okay.
Okay, good.
So what this, uh, next chart lays out is the potential range of rate impacts from the minimum impact, which would be compliance with the new state standard up to the impact of, uh, acquiring and retiring all of the recs in the portfolio. So, uh, this just lays out, uh, on a year by year basis, uh, the range of potential impacts that we're looking at. And this is a repeat of the slide that was, uh, presented previously, uh, except that I also had a couple of other intermediate points in there that, uh, represented the, um, uh, R P S and the C E S, uh, standards, uh, in terms of the rate impact, should we attempt to, uh, comply with those. So this, this is just the, the range, uh, that we would be looking at.
Um, can I ask a question, Chuck?
Please, go ahead.
These are just, those are, um, compounding impacts on retail rates.
No, those would be the year by year. So if we were to take twenty twenty-two and we were to, uh, retire, uh, the recs, um, in our portfolio, we would need to increase our rates about four percent, uh, to cover that. Uh, we would then need another two percent in twenty twenty-three to pick up the extra margin, uh, of the, uh, recs that we would have in that year.
Chuck, another question. What, what falls under biomass? What's included in biomass?
Um, biomass is usually combustion of, uh, green material. So if we were to have wood chips, uh, that would be a biomass, uh, plant.
So that's kind of, okay, there's some controversy with biomass, isn't there, about whether that's
There's controversy with biomass and with methane combustion from landfills. Um, biomass would also, uh, include agricultural waste. Uh, so if we were to, uh, collect, uh, manure on a farm, uh, we were to uh, collect renderings from a meat processing facility, uh, et cetera. We were to run it through a methane digester, uh, that would be a biomass.
Right. I, my understanding is most of the biomass is burning trees.
That, that is a, a big part of it. Um, biomass has been part of, uh, the renewables, uh, portfolio since the renewable portfolio standard was created. It has been, uh, listed as a, uh, viable resource.
Okay, so we have some controversy about that and sure we'll, we'll address it here, perhaps moving forward. Um, you have another, uh, piece here, Chuck, on the generator performance?
Uh, yes, I believe slide twelve. There we go. Um, what I did was I just, uh, collected some information on how our, um, peak demand assets, uh, have performed, uh, to date. Uh, we have the twenty twenty impacts, which include, uh, the, uh, July, uh, peak activity. And the, uh, life to date impacts from, uh, each of these. So the battery energy storage system, uh, has had a positive impact on our portfolio of three quarters of a million dollars. The two and a half megawatt generator has had a positive impact on our portfolio of about about one point four million dollars. We have the two solar choice programs. Solar Choice One is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. Solar Choice Two has an interesting history. It started out as a negative for the the first couple of years, but we've been positive for the last few, and we've been closing that up. But the total impact of our peak management activities has been two and a quarter million dollars.
That's great.
I got a question here. Question?
Question, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, so on the I noticed on my bill that one of the, and I can't remember which one, one of the solar choices has been dropped off the bill. I'm not getting a credit like I was from before. Is that what's going on there?
I believe the credit for Solar Choice Two went to zero.
It has zero. One of them is dropped off the bill completely.
Yeah. I can provide you with the analysis and the backup materials for how that was calculated.
Is that Chuck, is that because we don't have enough participation? Or it's not?
No, both projects are fully subscribed. It has to do with the value of the capacity against the time that the Solar Choice project was built.
Okay.
Was that credit ever gonna come back to me, or what what's going on?
The credit is it's recalculated every year. Part of the problem is that going forward, the capacity rate is dropping rather dramatically. And so if it goes to a negative benefit, we set it to zero.
So I guess the good news here is that the battery and the two and a half megawatt generator have basically they're they're paying themselves back, especially the generator within two years, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
And the battery, of course, was a grant, so that's that was a million dollar grant, right? So we're basically very far ahead on that one.
Generators are about a million dollars a megawatt per purchase.
That battery is a beautiful thing.
Sure is.
Can we get another one?
We are looking at additional battery options as we develop Solar Choice Three. And we're looking at battery options associated with some of the other development opportunities on our distribution system.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chuck.
There was also a question that had been asked as to what we are doing with some of our FERC litigation activities. And I just wanted to point out that we've been involved in a couple of interventions at FERC regarding filings that have been made. There were two projects that came along. One was Mystic Units Eight and Nine, which wanted rather significant cost adjustments to remain available for a four-year period. And the municipals, including RMLD, intervened in that docket to bring the costing down on that. It's probably shortened the life of the Mystic Units by a year or so, but resulted in significant cost savings from what Mystic wanted to charge ISO to remain open. The other docket that we participated in recently, which netted us just about a tenfold benefit to our investment, was getting involved with National Grid's formula subtransmission rate and how Grid was incorporating certain of the plant assets into the process. And we intervened in that, and were successful in pointing out to FERC that some of that needed to be changed. And we came up with a side negotiation with National Grid to adjust the formula rate. So that had about a ten to one return to us in terms of managing those benefits. So the municipal light plants in Massachusetts do get involved with FERC regulation, and we've been successful over the last couple of years in how we've participated in those dockets and what we've gotten for our efforts. We keep the IOUs honest.
That's.
Can I add a comment, John?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Our FERC council is Duncan and Allen. So that's who Chuck is talking about.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, having the fox in the hen house there is not a great thing, right? When they're adding their additional costs into their factors, if you don't have a sharp pencil to kind of look at what they're doing. Excellent. Thank you very much, Chuck. I think we're moving on to the financial update, if there are no other questions.
Good evening. So tonight I'm going to report on the financials for the first six months of the year ended June thirty. So first, I'd like to say that your first glance at the financial statements may be a little daunting, maybe it's a little scary, but don't believe it. So I don't know if you recall, a couple of months ago, we kind of presented a reforecasted six-year plan because of the compounded effects of the revenue that we had originally budgeted for. So we are right on target with the reforecast plan, as Chuck has said about the kilowatt-hour sales, where we said we would intend to end the year at either flat or maybe negative two percent, and we are about a negative one percent right now as far as sales go. So if you were to look at the if when you're reviewing the financials, if you actually look at June this year compared to June last year, you get a better picture where we stand. And overall, the expenses are pretty comparable, and the revenue at this time is two million dollars under purchase power purchase power revenue is two million dollars under purchase power expense. And as you know, in the past, we've talked about how it's a pass-through, and every month Chuck recuperates the cost from the customers through the revenue, and at year-end, it typically is balanced out. So this month through June, it's about a two million dollar difference. But that's where a little bit of the swing is that you can see. But I'm not I'm not really concerned, just so you know. So if you look at the cash balances here on the slide, you can see we're in a really good position. Our unrestricted funds of twenty-two million dollars and total restricted funds of twenty-seven million. If you look at the sick leave benefits, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, anybody who's been following along realizes that's very low as compared to how it's been in the past, and I'll get into that a little further. But overall, there's the pie chart of all the cash accounts, total fifty million dollars. The next slide I wanted to focus on is our accounts receivable, considering the COVID impact. Every month I come up here and I tell you that we're doing great with our receivables, and I did two different analyses. One, just the three months of the COVID impact, April to June. And then the next slide, not just yet, Tracy, but the next slide, you'll see the total six months. So this impact, you can see April, May, June for the past three years. I just did a quick analysis so that you can kind of get the picture. We're we're pretty much in line for April and May, and then in June is where you can see, this is thirty days current, June is where you can see that customers are not paying as quickly. Typically, I report ninety days current, but I wanted you to see both the thirty days and the ninety. So you can tell it's dropped about six percent. So typically, we we are at eighty-six percent for thirty days, and now it's at seventy-nine percent. Next slide, Tracy. And then when you look at the ninety days current, you see how it it's it's April and May is kind of pretty balanced, and then June is where it dips again, and it's the same same situation. Typically, it's about ninety-eight point five percent current at the ninety days, and now we're at ninety-four percent. And the reason I use ninety days as a as kind of a measure is because of the timing effect. People don't always, you know, people who are not on auto pay, they just forget to pay their bill, it's not intentional, and typically around ninety days is a really good judge of who's still outstanding for real reasons and who's not. So I really like to use this as an indicator for my analysis. So I I would say it's still it's still fairly impressive, if you think about it. Ninety-four percent is is a good number. Go on, Tracy, please. So then here we go. I just so as I stated, the sick leave buyback, I think it's a good opportunity right now to identify that you're aware of some of the changes that were made in the CBA, the bargaining labor unions, that we are allowing employees to buy back sick time. And this has been an ongoing effort that Colleen has taken on with with the board to try to minimize the light the sick leave liability. So you can tell the bottom is June of twenty sixteen, and that's about three point three million dollars of a sick buyback liability. So you can see the the ins and outs based on the COLA each year, based on employees leaving and and coming in. And we've removed the idea that you can have unlimited sick buyback. Everybody's down to thirty days limit. And if you look at our numbers at the end of June, we're down to two point one million dollars in the sick leave liability. So that's pretty significant, and a four-year drop of one point two million dollars. So that shows that the the plan is working, and we're removing the liability, which means we're also removing the idea that employees, after have been having been here very long, they're leaving at the rate that they're leaving at. So this is really good for the RMLD.
That's that's good. It sounds so you're really getting that under control. That's great.
Next slide, please, Tracy. So sorry for the the labeling. It's a little misleading. It's not operating revenue to operating expenses. It's operating revenue to overhead, so maintenance, general and administrative expenses. And the reason I did this is just to show you the the trend for January to June for three years of the operating revenues going down slightly, which is also a big part to do with purchase power expenses decreasing. So because if the expense decreases, then the revenue will decrease. But then if you look at the blue, these are our these are our maintenance, general and operate general and administrative expenses. You can tell in the three years, we're pretty stable there from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty is only an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars. So our expenses, the ones that we actually can control, I mean, you know, we don't have a lot of control, but we have some control, are pretty flat. So we're we're staying very responsible, and and then the revenue's coming down. But with the revenue coming down, you will start to see the revenue flatten out as we go month to month. We'll we'll catch back up on that.
So Wendy, what that also tells me is that we're a fixed-cost organization, and we have a certain basic amount of fixed costs. We have very little flexibility in terms of, you know, addressing the actual cost portion of it. So it's really about what can we do to kick up the revenue, right?
Right, and then we and we say that every time we present the budget, we we show you.
Right.
Exactly. Okay, go on, Tracy. Thank you. And here we go. I just wanted to show you just the April to June impact of the same exact slide, just, you know, because of the COVID impacts. Everybody's concerned, and rightfully so. So I just want to make you understand that it's very it's very consistent, same situation here. We got about a two hundred thousand dollar difference from year twenty eighteen through twenty twenty, and the same kind of trend. So nothing outside of, you know, it's nothing scary, it's nothing, you know, everybody's pretty much on track.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, I think that's so overall, we got a negative operating income of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but I am confident with the purchase power expenses that we will level out, and we'll be back in the positive in no time.
Excellent. Any questions from from anyone? If not, could we move to Ameed, to your engineering and operations report?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present you the construction projects and the projects that are currently under the way and the recently completed projects. The first slide, you see that we got that big conversion project that it's going on in Lynnfield Center, starting from Lynnfield Center, continuing down the Lowell and North Main Street area. Approximately, there are fifty-four poles that are they are involved. We are upgrading everything, primaries, secondaries, and the transformers in that area. And by doing that project, actually, we're gonna reduce the distribution losses, which is good. That means it's saving money, saving us money. And we've got a few more projects like that, that, you know, these step-down areas that we still, you know, got we gotta do the conversion. So the next one is the next area that we're making improvements is Phase Two of the Marion Street in Wilmington. That's a line extension. We approximately replaced twenty-one hundred feet of underground cable, and we we installing actually three thousand feet of the three-phase overhead on the pole lines. It involves twenty-six poles, and we are upgrading the H transformers as well as the replacing or upgrading the secondary mains and the services. So this project is ongoing, and we expect that to be completed by end of the year. So that's gonna be another big undertaking for the for the line group. The next one is the Parkview Road in Reading area. That's again involving the replacing and upgrading the two transformers for the load optimization, for service load optimizations, upgrading the primary conductors and electrical facilities to new poles. As you could see in the picture on the far on the far left, you know, there are some of open wires, actually, the picture right in the middle, it shows you those open open wires, secondaries, that these are really the old constructions, and the new construction is a triplex, which is right, you see, on the left, replaced by three wires that they're twisted, and it's more reliable and lower losses again, which is much, much better, especially during the storms. The next slide, please. The Kenwood Road in Wilmington, this is another area upgrade that involves poles, primary cables, secondary transformers and the services. Again, rising replaced twenty-two poles in that area, and we are upgrading everything from the pole pole to primary, secondary, is everything down. And thirty-six customers that they're they're included in this project. The project's approximately thirty-three percent completed, and we expect that project also to be completed by December twenty twenty. The next slide is showing the Vest Overdrive Underground Facility Upgrade. These are six of the seven pad mount transformers have been replaced, and we replaced approximately three thousand feet of primary conductors, and that's again another area upgrade. And we are almost at the end of this construction, and this is getting completed in about a week or so. On the left, you see the transformer, the condition that it was, and on the right, you see the new transformer and how the, you know, the the upgrade that been made. The bottom of these transformers are rusted, and, you know, these are the ones that could impact the reliability, and we're addressing those based on over-aged transformer replacement priorities that we set and the the studies that we do. That list is continuously being updated, so we address the ones that they really need the attention. The next slide shows you the Greenbrier Drive that that's in North Reading. That's an underground facilities upgrade. Again, all the cables and the five of the seven transformers are replaced. The remaining two transformers are they're in good conditions, they're less than ten years old, so they're not replaced, they're in good working conditions. And basically, we are we're gonna be done with this project also soon. So and then we're gonna, obviously, we're gonna monitor those two transformers, the loading and everything, to make sure the loading stays within the within the guidelines. The project pretty much is completed. There's some minor work that needs to be done, but it, for the most part, the project is complete. The next slide is showing you the other projects. These are the maintenance. The next uh, slide is showing you the other projects. These are the maintenance and also capital authorization projects. Uh, the power factor optimization software implementations, we are going to implement that as soon as the outage management system and IVR project is completed. Right now, we are still testing. And uh, uh, this thing is a little bit delayed due to the COVID nineteen because of the contractors, they need to come over here and you know, program them, uh, program that and complete the testing. So that's uh, delayed. Uh, the solar capacity study, that is done. And we are currently right now preparing the operating procedure for that. And that's a very good study that shows the limits uh, of generation on every feeder. Uh, the next one is the meter replacement project that Colleen explained, that that project is continuously, uh, right now being awarded to a contractor, a consultant uh, to evaluate the meter purchase options and integration of the AMI with MDM as well as, you know, the other components in the roadmap technology that we put together uh, five, six years ago. The pad mount switchgear upgrades uh, at Industrial Park. Uh, these are the ones that you know, we need to upgrade as a part of the uh, switchgear upgrade, the plan, which is a capital improvement project. The switchgears that are arriving in mid-August. And as soon as they arrive, we're gonna get started and we're gonna schedule those to uh, be replaced. The next slide is showing you the maintenance programs, the tree trimming, the inspection of feeders. We just completed inspection of feeders. This is one of the greatest programs that you know, for the, that heavily impacts the reliability of reliability. And that's why our reliability, reliability is so great. Because we expect all the feeders and making sure that they are in good conditions. And if there are any issues that need to be addressed before the storms or before the, you know, the winter season, uh, so we take care of those. Uh, we have replaced so far uh, two hundred eighty-two poles out of the five hundred eighteen that failed and tested and failed. Uh, that by failing meaning that there is, you know, there's still life left to them, but they're not failed. They failed the test for the sake of, you know, uh, putting them, scheduling them for replacement. But we still got time to uh, replace those. But two hundred eighty of those have been replaced. Um, and uh, about two hundred sixty-three of the two eighty-two uh, poles, they have, the transfer has been completed on those. So we're just getting, though we're making progress on those, we're getting to the rest of them as uh, we're going through these uh, uh, areas with the upgrades. The infrared scan, that's another great program. We haven't seen any hotspots. Uh, primary metering testing, that's delayed due to the COVID nineteen travel restrictions. The contractor, Anixter, is uh, based out of the Illinois. And they're contracted to come and do this project for us. However, because of the testing and it might be more, more cost to them if they test positive coming over here. And they need to be quarantined for fourteen days. The contractor, they, they wanna wait until those restrictions are removed. So uh, this is delayed, but they're still honoring the contract and you know, we, we are safe there. The manhole inspection, that's ongoing as a result of that, you know, the, that inspection, we, we found uh, about thirty manholes that you, we have a bid that uh, at the end of this presentation, you're gonna be voting on in order to fix those manholes that the chimney wall is broken and they need attention. So that's the result of this manhole inspection program, which is good. Uh, the porcelain cutout, that's ongoing because as we're going through these uh, the area upgrades, we're replacing them. There are not many left. So uh, they're taken care of. So that completes the maintenance program. Next slide is showing you the H transformer replacement programs. Basically, on the chart on the right, it shows you that you know, thirty-eight per- percent of the overall uh, transformers in the system. We've got about forty-six hundred of those. Uh, they're still in the twenty-five years uh, of age. It doesn't mean the transformer is going to fail, but it means that it's going with the maintenance program and prioritized based on the age for replacement. Uh, the chart on the left, it shows you that to date, we have replaced approximately forty uh, eight single-phase transformer, four three-phase transformer and about nine pad mount transformers. So total is sixty-one, which is, you know, last year, this time, we were approximately about eighty, ninety, uh, you know. So we're a little bit behind because of the COVID nineteen, but we are catching up with all these, you know, uh, upgrade, area upgrades that we're doing through December. The next slide. This is slide shows you basically the capital spendings uh, through the month of June. The year-to-date is three point six million dollars and budget was eleven and a half, as Colleen explained. Some of these projects, they're gonna be pushed. Uh, the substation uh, land purchase is gonna be pushed because we're still searching for the land. Uh, and also the meter replacement. That's another one because the technology keeps changing and you know, there are new developments and more companies that they're offering the AMI solutions, uh, looking into the future. We hired a consultant to look at the, the Status Co, RMLD's Status Co, and look into the future and study the road, what the technology roadmap that we put together, Colleen and I, we put together. So that, uh, based on that, they're gonna do the gap analysis and they're gonna look into the future to see what the future brings and where we need to go with that. So uh, as a result of that, then you know, then obviously by the time uh, we go, we go out to bid, that's gonna be uh, you're going into the, to a CY twenty-one. So uh, the project actually is gonna be pushed to CY twenty-one implementation, once the result of the study comes out. Uh, so the remaining balance is seven point nine million approximately. So that's the status of the uh, capital spendings. Next slide. All right. On this slide, you see the double poles, uh, the engine uh, report in Linfield. We got sixty-four poles uh, in North Reading. We got the sixty, we got, we got fourteen pole, a pole box that needs to be remo- removed and two in dispute. And the town of Reading, we got twenty-three transfers and two pole box to remove. And Wilmington, we got eighty-six. These are all, the numbers are high because of these projects that you know, Verizon actually been very helpful. I want to thank them for cooperating with us and you know, setting those poles. Uh, and as we've explained uh, previously, uh, once we go, as we go through these projects, the project engineers, they do the poll form and analysis for pole tension guide calculations. And uh, they designed the system and they send the six or five forms to Verizon, to the Verizon set areas. So they can schedule them ahead of time and it won't be the last minute thing. And that process been really working great for us. And as soon as you know, we do the transfers, these poles, the double poles, uh, you know, the ones that uh, once everybody is done transferring, we're gonna remove the pole butts in other pole set areas and Verizon is gonna take care of theirs in their pole set areas. The next slide is showing the reliability indices as everybody expects. Our reliability numbers are really great. We're doing very well. And that's the result of the good maintenance and the programs and capital spendings and here, there. So all in all, it's paying off. And I'm hoping that this year again, we're gonna, we're gonna hit the APPAs award for the fourth year. And I'm sure we're gonna get that. So uh, the reliability is good. I'm glad to report that. The next slide is showing you basically the causes of the outages. As you could see, we've had a number of weather incidents to year-to-date, you know, compared to the last five years. You know, the number of uh, weather incidents gone up, the wildlife uh, gone up. And uh, the equipments and it's still go, it's still lower. But some of those equipment, uh, that should have been damaged as a result of the wildlife uh, uh, contact as well as the weather issues that we've had and some the, the more vehicle accidents. So uh, this, you might ask the question, how come with the wildlife? We have the wildlife protection uh, you know, uh, on, on poles, on the devices. But the squirrels are smart. They go underneath and chew the wires and that, that's how they make the contact. And they cause serious damages to the equipment once they do that. The next slide. This is the, showing the facilities projects at two thirty Ashes Street. You could see that, you know, that deck came out already nice. Beautiful to everybody. We get lots of comments. Uh, that was Colleen's design, so good job, Colleen. And uh, it's really good. The parking lot is great and the people, they like it, you know, more space. So all in all, you know, the, the improvements to the building and uh, everything that these, those projects have completed. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions, ladies and gentlemen, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you very much, Hameed. That excellent report and I do have to comment every time I drive past the uh, front of RMLD and I see what, what has been done to the, the parking lot, the expanded parking and the electric car um, recharge stations. It's, it looks like a thousand percent better. Um, and it's very, very uh, can be utilized of as opposed to the gravel pit that used to be there. So that was uh, that was fantastic. Uh, one, one question. Um, Verizon replacing their poles, they're replacing their own poles. And I'm assuming a secondary question, when Verizon, uh, since half the poles in our territory are Verizon poles, I'm assuming they don't have to allow anyone else in terms of 5G onto those poles. Is that correct? John, would you know?
Yeah, so um, Verizon still have, they're, they still have, there's two separate entities. There's Verizon Wireless and Verizon Business. Uh, they're considered two separate entities. Um, and uh, it's up to them to sign master agreements with other utility companies. But Verizon Business is still held to the same standards as everyone else with the uh, the FCC regulations. So uh, I, I would imagine that they, they would be uh, incorporating other wireless companies into those areas. As long as Verizon Wireless doesn't wrap up the licenses first.
Right, which I'm sure they will do. Yeah.
They'll, they'll take a run at it.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, uh, Bob.
Uh, John, I just let you know, um, they do try to manipulate, Verizon will try to combine the two entities together and say, oh, we're Verizon, so we get to use the pole. But that, that was actually beaten down. Um, so they do need to apply uh, independent of the company.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Not to be confused with custodial area. The poles are still joint-owned, fifty-fifty Verizon and RMLD. So even if Verizon is Verizon, they still have to ask the other owner of the pole, the other half of the pole. They still have to get our permission.
I didn't realize that. That's, that's a very good comment. Thank you, Colleen.
Uh, one, one other question, John, if I may?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
When, when Hameed mentioned engines, um, you know, having, making sure that whoever is asking to be on the pole becomes a member of engines. Is that one of the requirements that RMLD is putting on that entity? It should, it should be in the agreements expli- explicitly, just to make sure that, you know, if something does happen and you have an emergency transfer situation that, or, or a transfer situation after the fact, that they were a member of engines. So the ball in court goes to them. So it should, that's something that you should add, add to your agreement.
It's a good point, Robert. I'm writing an email now.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Yes. You should include them. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I know.
As far as the poles, John, that you, you mentioned, yeah, Verizon, they're sitting in their own set area. You know, they have them reading and the, the Wilmington and Linfield is their set area. So and uh, because they're short-staffed too during the COVID nineteen. I mean, we anticipated that. That's why we send those six or five forms well ahead of time to make sure they have ample time to schedule them. And they've been doing an awesome job. Really happy with the way that.
Good. That's excellent.
But set area is separate from ownership. That's all I was trying to point out.
Right. Uh, Phil, could we, uh, you, could you please read the motion?
You good? Uh, move the IFB two thousand twenty dash twenty-five for excavation repairs of you, of electric utility manholes. They were ordered to Zim, Tim Zinelli Excavating LLC for total cost a hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars pursuant to Mass Chapter Law, Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty, Section Thirty-nine M as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of general manager.
Second. Discussion?
Okay. Do you want me to tell you exactly what it is, this project?
Yeah, just very briefly. I saw the previous uh, uh, piece of paper that showed they were significantly lower than anybody.
Yeah, they're significantly lower. We actually sent a bid out to uh, approximately twenty companies. And only three bids were received. The lowest responsible, responsive, responsive bidder was the Tim Zinelli's Excavating LLC for hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty. These are the thirty chimneys that you know, the manholes that we, in the inspection, we found out problems with them. Uh, that they're collapsing or they're, you know, they need, they, they're in need of the repair. So uh, that's why this is a project. And in the capital authorization uh, budget for last year, we budgeted hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. So actually, this bid came out uh, lower than hundred sixty-five thousand. That was estimated approximately hundred thirty thousand. So uh, we, we're gonna take care of those as soon as you know, the board approves uh, this bid and award, we can award it.
Thank you, Hameed. Uh, roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Bob, please, discussion?
You're on mute, Bob.
You're on mute, Bob?
Oh, sorry. What was the next closest bid? If it's significantly lower, if we're talking, that, that's a little scary sometimes, right? When you get a low bid. You, you get what you pay for, right? Absolutely. It's, it's scary. Um, so.
Actually, two of the bids, they were very close, Bob. Uh, Tascow Construction came out, uh, that was the uh, the next hire. Uh, was hundred thirty-two thousand.
Oh, so it's.
So it was very close.
The, the other ones I was referring to were two hundred and fifty thousand or so.
Then, and the other one was two hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred thirty dollars.
That, that was fishing. Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Uh, could I call for a roll call vote, please? Mr. Steppacai? Mr. Hennessy?
Talbotai?
Goldara.
Excellent. Please uh, show in the minutes uh, a unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may add one more thing that.
Yes, please.
You know, Colleen and I, we're working on a lad prospect, land prospect for the substation. Uh, and the letter of intent, we're preparing the letter of intent in order to send it to the land owner that we can discuss more in detail uh, the executive session, to show you exactly where we're talking about. But uh, as a part of that process, we've been diligently looking for uh, the parcel that could be a good substation site as well as, you know, probably adding uh, battery storage and uh, solar. You know, so.
Okay, good. Um.
Thank you.
In, in terms of the next RMLD board meetings, Thursday, September seventeenth, uh, is that on, is uh, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Um, could we, could we alter it slightly?
To what?
Can we either do a different day that week or the, the following week? Does that cause a problem for anybody?
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably out the following week.
About a different day. Uh, I assume that's on, that's Thursday. So does uh, Wednesday uh, or Tuesday work for people?
Uh, Tuesday, September the fifteenth, that is not gonna work for me.
Okay, we're down to Wednesday or Monday. I mean.
No, Monday, you know.
How about Wednesday, Phil? Sixteen.
Wednesday, I, I think Wednesday could, is doable, doable.
Okay, let's put it down as Wednesday. And if anybody has any objections, we'll circulate uh, and try to do uh, do something different. But for now, let's assume Wednesday.
That works for me.
Great. Excellent. And so uh, Grace Committee, uh, that would be the day for you as well, Wednesday the sixteenth.
Wednesday the sixteenth isn't ideal for me, but I can make it work.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and then uh, the next one will be on Thursday, October twenty-second. We can decide that at the next meeting as well. The next cab meeting in September, uh, Mr. Hennessy, you're the uh, the person to attend that. But we'll have to let them know that perhaps they should move it to the sixteenth if possible, if you're supposed to be the person. Or perhaps I could switch with you for uh, that day.
Actually, if they, they attended by, they do it through Zoom. So I found it very easy to attend the meeting tonight. And I think I emailed Tracy, I think, an hour only before the meeting. So I don't think it's a real problem.
I'm just saying that Dave has a conflict on that, on that Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
So if he's got a conflict, either I switch with him uh, or they, they have moves to Wednesday. So if he's got a conflict, either I switch with him or they they have moves to Wednesday. And I don't know, we haven't. George, what do you think? Can CAB do Wednesday or you prefer Thursday?
Well, we are set for that Thursday, but we'll have.
Okay.
We'll figure it out. I I might even, my conflict's a little bit later that night, so I might be able to still do that CAB.
Okay, that'd be great.
If you get a problem, Dave, let me know and I can cover for you.
Okay.
Okay, good. So what I'd like to do is move into executive session. Could I have a motion?
Yep, very good. Move that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real, real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, great. Let's roll call vote. Mr. Stempac, aye?
Mr. Messino, aye?
Hennessy, aye?
Talbot, aye?
Excellent. Okay, thank you, everyone. Very good meeting. I look forward to our next one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.